All right, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call the August ninth?
Tenth.
Tenth, yeah, that meeting. I'm gonna call that one to order. And if we could, Mr. Daniels, will you lead us in the flag?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I got the wrong date.
So I'll take the role, Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
So tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cablecast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net, and tonight's meeting replays on Monday, August 14th at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Amy. I'm working on technical difficulties up here, trying to get my agenda up. So I believe the next item is approval of the agenda. Before we get there, we did have a closed session earlier, and there is no reportable action. So approval of the agenda, please.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstained. Motion carries. All right.
The next item is a presentation, number four, is the City of Citrus Heights 20 Year Celebration Top 20 Presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Devin.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Devin Rodriguez, Development Specialist with the Community Economic Development Department. So every month, we are announcing our top 20 lists, and as we move through our 20th Anniversary Celebration this year. And this month's top 20 list is top 20 longest residents of Citrus Heights. And with the help of a lot of our city staff and our volunteer archivist Tina Stern and some folks in the Historical Society, I think we've put together a pretty good top 20 list. We know that we might have missed some folks, so we will be doing some outreach afterwards when we publish the list to see if there's anybody else in Citrus Heights that we would be able to get in touch with and that would be one of our longest residents. So as a reminder, here's our schedule, and we're right here at the longest residents of Citrus Heights, and September will be Facts About Citrus Heights, which will actually be coming early, the next council meeting, since we don't have the September 14th council meeting. So here's our top 20 longest residents, and I'm going to read through them because I think a lot of the folks are here tonight. So Max Alexander, Dick Barron, Betty Leonard Benson, Keith and Jeanette Brown, the Cook Family, Will McCross, Charlotte Cruthers, Jack and Jean Duncan, Chuck and Joy Engival, Linda Farmer, Robert Fritz, Lorraine Fury, the Juice- Juicy Family, I think I get it right? All right. Luanne Lenke, Ted Mitchell, Virginia Owens, Joe and Arlene Ray, Colleen Sloan, Bob Stanland, and Jerry Still. And this is, of course, I didn't list it here, but is listed in alpha order, so it's not in the list of how many years folks have been here, but I believe that Ted Mitchell may take the top spot at 91 years. And more than half of this list, the folks have been here for 70-plus years in Citrus Heights.
Except for those who aren't 70 yet, but that, yeah. Yeah, I know Ted grew up here, was born here, and he's told me stories, and 91, wow. Good for him.
Yes. So, and I actually have a few photos or articles that some families provided to us, or Tina Stern's, our archivist, helped me with. So this is of the Still and Sons Plumbing. Jerry Still is in that bottom photo on the far left, and Tina provided to me that he has been here since 1946, when he and his family were driving north from Los Angeles to go settle in Oregon. The car ran out of gas on Auburn Boulevard, and they have been here ever since.
Happenstance.
The Still family opened up a plumbing company in Roseville as well as in Citrus Heights, right there at the Grand Oaks kind of area. And then Bob Stanland was one of our, was our first honorary mayor, and so there's a little article here from the newspaper in search of the next honorary mayor. And here's some photos from the Cook Family. So there's Jimmy and Bill at 16 and seven years old, and then the family home on Twin Oaks. This is the Ray family, Joe and Arlene Ray, and this is the Ray family home on Mariposa, just south of Old Auburn, and in this photo here is Joe and Gary Ray. So like I said, we might have missed some folks, although I think we made a really good effort of trying to get a lot of the people on the list. So if we missed anybody, we're asking, we're putting out the call now, so if there's anybody that folks think we have missed. A lot of the people on the list are 50-plus years that have been here. So we did have a few other people that people nominated, but 40 years just didn't cut it, you know? So if there's anybody that's been here for over 50 years, we would love to hear from them, and I've listed my contact information there. And then our next list will be the top 20 facts about Citrus Heights at the August 24th City Council meeting. And I know that we probably have a lot of the residents here tonight, so if any are able and would like to come up and take a picture with the City Council, we'd like to do that.
Yeah, so if you're here and you're able to come up, what I'd ask is we'll gather you all right here. I'll come down there, the City Council can kind of bunch together, and we'll get a picture 'cause we just need it. I was gonna say you're all getting old, but I didn't want to go there, so.
But we don't know how long you're gonna be around.
Right, exactly. I might be gone before you guys, so. So if you would, anybody whose name was called, and if you've got family members, bring them on down, gather right up here, and we're gonna get a picture.
And we also have some goodie bags for folks if you want to meet us in the lobby afterwards.
Who wants us up here, right? We frame it. We do, we frame the picture.
I'm gonna get behind you.
Max, how are you?
Do something, say.
Charlie.
There you go.
I don't know.
Can you get everybody, or are we still gotta get closer?
I think Joy needs to be in front of Max, or sort of.
Yeah, Joy, get out there in front.
There you go.
There you go.
All good? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Most folks don't, and I think the average, they say, is seven, five to seven years now to own a home and before you move, so. Good for you, folks. All right, next item. Amy.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Alrighty. I will start on my left, your right. Mr. Daniels.
No board reports, but school's back in session. Please drive carefully. Every year, we have some sort of tragedy, unfortunately, it seems, and most of them, I think, are preventable, so please, just keep in mind, school's back in session, and watch out for the kids.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Mr. Fox.
Yeah, just a couple of things, real quickly. The SAC Metro Cable email came out on the updates. The franchise fee distributions for Citrus Heights has been paid, and I, the $694,000 was the expected value budgeted. The actual was $711,000 in fees that have been sent to Citrus Heights on behalf of the Cable Commission. There is also a notice that will be coming out that's September the 17th at 8:00 p.m. on one of the PBS channels, Comcast six or seven, I believe it is. There will be the first broadcast of a series on the Vietnam War about the communities, about the people, about the war itself, about the veterans. It was produced and directed by local talent, and it'll be a series of Sunday evening productions that they show. I attended the SAC Transit Authority today. The board approved a new lease for their office facilities. Their current budget committee is in the process now of settling the budget for the upcoming year to be presented to the board in October. Citrus Heights has reportedly paid 100% of the funds due to STA. We're one of two in the area that are up to date and all paid off. A couple of them are two-thirds of the way, still in arrears. We discussed the impact of Freeway 50 construction, the closure of the freeway during this construction time, and service patrol responses and the difficulties that are going on. The lesson learned from there is if you've gotta go someplace that puts you across Highway 50 westbound through West Sacramento, don't figure another way to go, because the time is quite long, and the response by emergency vehicles and by the service patrol is extended. There was discussions about AB 1069 and SB 1, which is the allocation of funds for road construction. It was interesting that there is $44 million that will be distributed among the agencies and the communities. There's additional $200 million for local partnerships that will be coming out, 100 million of that to local agencies determined by a distribution formula, and 100 million of it is on a, distributed by a projections applications, or project applications, I should say, that's due in October for review. If we miss the deadline, we're dead in the water for two years, we can't apply again. However, I was told by Regina today, General Services, that we are on track, all of our application documents are prepared, and we will be ready to submit for a portion of that $100 million for local road projects. And what else was in this thing? $8 million in neighborhood shuttle program funds are being held at this time for use. There was original distribution ordinances that went into effect that did not cover the distribution of that $8 million, and so they are now looking at new ordinances and how to redistribute those funds. Some of the questions are, how are we going to have local shuttle services in some of the outlying areas and within the metropolitan areas that supplement what RT is doing? The redistribution language is now being prepared, and we should see it shortly. There was a request there specifically that areas like Citrus Heights, Orangevale, some of those of us who do not have a well-defined RT transit system and services that get to medical facilities and quality of life needs met be addressed first and foremost as to getting part of that money. The director of RT was there and has assured the Transportation Authority that they will, in fact, look at that very definitely, because it's not the first time they've heard it, and so there's a chance that we may see some of those fees coming our way for local neighborhood shuttle services or areas to address for Citrus Heights. And then the last thing that we saw today was Capitol Southeast Quarter. For those of you that aren't familiar with it, there is the move to take road improvements that go from I-5 across to 99, the south edge of Elk Grove at Grant Line, and all the way out through Sacramento County into Eldorado County at Latrobe, Eldorado Hills, and then jump up at Sylvan Road up there, I think it's called Silva, Silva Valley Road, jump up on I-50. It cuts a whole lot of the transit traffic across Sacramento from the south. That was a program that was actually, the first time I ever saw it, was back when Ronald Reagan was governor. It was something that Pat Brown, the father of our current governor, had put out, and they talked about it all the way back then, but it never took fruition, and they ended up selling the properties that the state had purchased for part of that. However, it's now moving along quite well. They're anticipating probably 2020 by the time it is all completed. And there's a new Measure A that's being looked at, for those of you that study the measures. Measure B was the one for road tax increases that failed to get the proper amount of votes. They're now discussing how to resubmit that. There's some discussions afoot now of possibly putting that Measure B on the 2018 ballot, and we should be seeing some of that language sometime between now and the end of the year. And that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Al. Janie.
Ms. Bruins.
Thank you. Sanitation Board did not meet since our last council meeting, so I have no report out there. Just wanted to talk about a few of the things that are happening in the community as we wrap up summer. First of all, this Saturday is Hot August Bites over at Rush Park, and it's a car show and food trucks and free swimming from 11 to 1:00. So bring your kiddos and come on out and enjoy the fun for that. And then our Police Activities League is sponsoring a free swim for kids on Saturday, August the 26th, for PAL kids from 10 to 1:00. So if you have a child who's in PAL, come on down for that, and if you have a child who's not in PAL, you can sign them up on the spot there, and it's only $5 for the whole year, and all the activities, pretty much, most of them are all included in that. Also, I'd like to just share that our PAL Police Academy was really successful this year. We had 65 kids in it for a whole week of taking a look at what law enforcement's all about, leadership skills, character building, over, and they took place at Rush Park, and want to thank Diane Ebbett, who's in the audience, for helping put that on, along with Lieutenant Russo and the other members of the Police Department that were involved. And then, just lastly, Seropimus put on a really great fundraiser for the benefit of PAL last Saturday. It was a beer garden, and there was music, and just a lot of nice social interaction with our community. So want to thank them for that. They've really stepped their activities up to a new level in the last few years. So one of our many service clubs in Citrus Heights that does a lot to support the needs of our community. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bruins. Mr. Miller.
Mayor, I did not attend a RT meeting since our last city council. We have one this Monday, the 14th, I believe it is, and nothing major on the agenda, as I look at it, other than just an update on the bus route optimization study that RT is performing. I did attend, along with the entire council, the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, where our mayor did a good job doing a state-of-the-city address, and we all saw, we're out on August 1st for National Night Out, and my escort was Lieutenant Chad Courtney, and Brett was riding with us, and we got to hit some pretty good barbecues with our neighborhood watches and get out there and meet folks throughout the city, so that was a fun night.
Good. Is that it? Thank you. All right, Sacramento Transportation Committee met, spent some time talking about the Civic Lab, and, you know, I'm hearing a couple of common themes between what Al told us about STA, what you've mentioned about RT. Civic Lab actually has funding for various projects, and, you know, I kind of thought one of the things that might be good to approach on that is, you know, the City Ride, the whole issue of multi-jurisdictional transit, just to give you folks an idea. So we have City Ride in town, but if you're a Kaiser subscriber and you need to go to Kaiser up in Roseville, it's in Placer County. They can take you to the border and drop you off, and you can walk your way up there, but they can't take you there because it's Placer County, and they get funding from a different source. Totally ridiculous, you know, the one on, anyway, there's one that's two blocks outside the city limits, Riverside. So to me, that's gotta be fixed. You know, it shouldn't be a county, imaginary line shouldn't prevent citizens from going where they need to go. Clearly, our transportation needs to evolve. So there's some programs out there, and one of them's actually around ADA, but it's very similar to where there's, Boston started it, and it's worked really well, where jurisdictions have supplemented their transportation system via Uber and Lyft, paid up to, say, $10, $12 a ride, which is $40 cheaper than putting somebody on a City Ride or an ADA bus now and getting them to where they need to go. So not only does it serve the people better, but it serves the agency better. So I'm gonna send an email to a couple people on our staff to see if they can attend the Civic Lab presentation on the 17th, which is a week from today, to Regina and Mary. I just think it'd be good to, you know, determine if we need to be at the table on one of those projects. You mentioned the Seropimus Brew test, State of the City, I won't go there, Hot August nights. I do want to briefly talk to you all about goats, and I say that in all sincerity. So it was gonna happen this weekend, but now it's, looks like it might not happen till Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, but we have hired a service, basically a bunch of goats, 140 of them, to come out and chew our weeds in two places. One of them, right outside City Hall on this, all this empty land here. They're gonna come out, be fenced in for two to four days, depending upon how long it takes them to chew through it. But again, probably starting next Tuesday or Wednesday, so if you have young kids or grandkids, bring them out. The only thing I do want to pre-warn everybody, they will set up a temporary fence around it, and it is electrified, so don't be thinking you're gonna go out there, reaching through the fence, but it's a good opportunity to see them at work. And then one of the tougher areas within the city is within our creeks. So we have a creek off of Navion, Misty Creek and Starflower and that area. So the goats are gonna be in there. Goats are not allergic to poison oak. They actually like poison oak. They like blackberries, they can eat the thorns and everything. So basically, send them in there, and they clean out everything except for the trees, and it's about two-thirds of the cost of hiring a service to go in and do that. We've done that in the past, and actually, the last time we did, we had a big issue with most of them coming down with poison oak issues. So the goats don't have that problem. Plus, the goats don't know any lawyers, so it's really good for us. So, but they'll be here, again, around the field in City Hall, starting Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, and then over off of Navion, around, you know, Navion, Misty Creek, Starflower, that area. But they will be chewing and fertilizing for us while they're there. So that covers it on council comments. Public comment is next. Amy, if you would.
Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you, Amy. So I have one speaker sheet, so if anybody else besides Janet Jacox wants to speak, if you would please fill out one of these in the back, and I'll call you after you give them to Amy. But at this point, Janice Jacox, you will have five minutes to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's on, right?
Yep, we can hear you.
This kind of ties into what Mr. Daniel said about kids are back to school, but it's not just about kids, pedestrians. I live near Sylvan Corners, and I have, over the last few months, have realized that walking along, I'm gonna call it the south side of Auburn Boulevard. Auburn is diagonal, so you, is it the west side or the south side? Who knows? The south side of Auburn Boulevard, along Stock Ranch Shopping Center, is treacherous for pedestrians. There are three driveways into the shopping center. One right now is not an issue, the middle one. The first one, or starting from the east end, the one in front of Walmart, the people that are stacking in the left turn lane to turn in are not looking for pedestrians. They're looking straight up Auburn Boulevard to find a space, and there's, the crosswalk is kind of offset there. And I have more than once, because I like to walk, I go through the nature area and everything, have been in the middle of that driveway, in the middle, when a car's pulling in front of me, turning left into the driveway, never saw me, because they're just waiting for a gap in the traffic on Auburn Boulevard. And the people turning right onto Auburn Boulevard, all we, they don't look to their right, they're looking, they want to get as far forward in front of the line of trees as they can to look up Auburn Boulevard for the same gap in traffic, and they just whip around the corner. If there's a pedestrian there, good luck. But interestingly, the intersection that's signalized down by Applebee's and Costco is more dangerous, because people coming, there's a little merge lane there, and people know they can get around on Auburn Boulevard, even if there's traffic coming and stop, and they aren't looking for pedestrians. And I have, in fact, last Friday, week ago Friday, I was walking up there to meet a friend at Applebee's for lunch, and I had the walk signal. It was flashing and beeping, and I took a step off, and I saw a car coming up from Costco, high rate of speed, so I just sort of stepped back on the sidewalk, and I'm alive today. If I was a 12-year-old kid walking home from the school, I'd be dead right now, because I had a walk signal, and the car just was going around the corner to merge onto Auburn Boulevard. They aren't looking for pedestrians along there. In fact, when I walked through the nature preserve, instead of walking back up towards Applebee's and down Auburn Boulevard, and I walk all the way back around behind Walmart and Costco to come out so that I don't have to cross either one of those driveways. Now, the middle one is not an issue. When there's a full build-out, it'll have the same issues as these two. I don't know what can hap, you can do with the eastern one. I mean, there's, it's an unsignalized, open turn. But up with the signal one, that's the one where people have a sense of security, because they have a walk signal. So perhaps something like at Auburn Boulevard and Greenback, where there's this flashing light that says, "Give way to pedestrians," because people walk and, you know, to catch the bus, people whip. I guess you guys decided it was dangerous enough, or the traffic engineers thought it was dangerous enough, they put that sign up there. Maybe something like that at that intersection? There's not a huge volume of pedestrians there, but there are people there all day long, walking back and forth, and the drivers aren't watching for us. And it's just a tragedy waiting to happen, I think, especially at the signalized one.
I appreciate you coming forward, Janice, and giving us your comments. I don't go there that often, I haven't seen that, but I'm sure it probably exists. So we have city engineers here, we have our police department here. I'm going to ask you if you could talk to one of our police officers in the back, that way we'll kind of gather, you know, make sure besides your thing, and we will definitely look into it, because, like you said, we don't, we don't want to be pre-warned of a condition and not know about it.
And being a middle school up there, there's a lot, there are kids that, kids that walk.
That's a whole different story.
I mean, kids that walk, it's not little kids that are being picked up.
And those are the parents, so it's, you know, it's a different story. But thank you. So there's a couple of officers, ma'am, in the back. If you would, wouldn't mind talking to them, giving them some more information, we'll...
I'll go talk to them and leave. I'm packing, I'm leaving for Peru in the morning.
Well, good for you.
Being here ought to be packing.
Good for you. Peru? All right. I don't have any other speaker sheets, so before I close out the public comment, I don't see anybody running, so I will go ahead and close the public comment. Next item. Amy.
Next item is consent calendar items five and six.
Thank you. So there's two items on the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any of them, or if not?
No approval.
There you go.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please, Amy.
So the next item is regular calendar, item number seven. The subject is use of facility, city facility as a vote center for the 2018 primary and general elections. So I'll give you, give the presentation on this item. Let me just get my computer up here. So the county of Sacramento recently approved a new voting model, which eliminates traditional polling places and replaces them with vote centers. So the county, the Department of Voter Registration and Elections is in the process of establishing those vote center locations throughout the county that would be open for a period of 11 or four days. The city has received a request from the county to use city facilities, specifically the community center, as a vote center for both the June and November, primary and November general election in 2018. So the community center has served as a polling place in the past, but with this increased time commitment, it could possibly conflict with potential facility rentals and may result in a loss of revenue. Therefore, we've looked at other options, and a vote center could be held here... Therefore, we've looked at other options, and a vote center could be held here in our city council chambers, which provides adequate space for voting equipment, restrooms, parking, and accessibility. The council chambers, if it's used, would be open during City Hall's regular business hours, so would require little staff time to maintain it during that time. However, a portion of the time does include up to two weekends. Staff looked into the estimated cost if we were open for two weekends, and that was approximately $686 to staff the building over the two weekends. And I'd like to mention that Chris Myers with the General Services Department's here, if you do have any questions about the level of staffing and what that would look like. Also in attendance tonight is the County of Sacramento Register of Voters, Jill Levine, and she will be giving a presentation on the Voters' Choice Act and the changes that the voters can expect with this upcoming election in 2018. Then following her presentation, staff is seeking the council's feedback and direction regarding the use of the city council chambers and the level of time commitment. With that, I'm available for any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Jill Levine to give her presentation.
Jill, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, I have several, but I think they're probably going to be directed to you more so than Amy, so if you wouldn't mind going through your...
Okay, well, thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here. And yes, thank you, Amy, for the community center. It was a double poll in November, which means we actually had two polling places in it, so we do appreciate your help with that and part, being part of the community. You are also a drop-off site, and so, and a lot of people came to your facility to drop off ballots, which is great. So this is the California Voters' Choice Act. Let me see if I can... Okay. Which way does it work? Okay. Nope.
We'll give you a little help, one back.
So what is the Voters' Choice Act? This is Senate Bill 450. It was signed in 2016 by our governor, and this kind of, it's a, to me, it's a big change. It allows fourteen counties to move to this vote center model for the 2018 election. The rest of the counties can move in 2020. So it's just kind of a baby step to get us started. Some of the counties, Sacramento is the largest county moving forward. Sutter, Nevada, Enyo, Calaveras, Madera, Napa, San Mateo, and Tooluma are moving forward. So, okay, where do I point this? He said, oh, over there. No, okay, just skip that one. And we went to the board, and we did get board approval, so our Board of Supervisors is supporting this. So what does it mean? Well, the Voters' Choice Act, every registered voter in Sacramento County will be getting a ballot. Now, in the past, only those that signed up to be a permanent vote-by-mail ballot would be getting the ballots. We have a sixty-four percent registered voters that are already permanent, so this will only be new to about thirty-four percent, or thirty-six percent of our voters. Couple of options, because this is what it means by voter's choice. You can return that ballot, stick it in the mail and mail it back to us. You can drop it in one of our drop-off boxes, like you had here at Citrus Heights. Or you can return it to one of our vote centers, or you can come down to our office and return it. And a lot of people don't under, don't realize, but vote-by-mail ballots, we actually start processing them legally, ten days, if we can, before, prior to Election Day. And processing means we actually start verifying all the signatures on those ballots, opening them up, flattening them, and getting them prepared for counting. So even though we do all of that, results are never released until eight PM on Election Night. I'm just going to let you turn it. So what does it mean to you? Of course, your ballot must be signed, and it must match the signature on our voter file. You have to be eligible to vote in Sacramento, and you cannot have voted another ballot in the same election. If you ever want to check the status of your ballot, that is on our website. As soon as we receive it, it is marked, received, it's marked in review as we go through the process, and then it is marked good, hopefully. It's all good. So, okay. So, so while every voter receives the ballot in the mail, vote centers will be open, and they start opening ten days before the election. There will be sixteen sites that will be open ten days before the election, and then an additional sixty-four sites will be open four days before the election. So there is actually two, kind of, two series of these vote centers. But a total of close to between seventy-eight and eighty vote centers will be open throughout the county. Now, the great thing about a vote center, it is a universal polling place, we like to call it. Any voter can go to any vote center. You do not have, you're never assigned to a vote center. You, it's your choice. Choose where you want to go. If it's close to the kids' soccer field, if it's right here in where you work, if it is down by where you shop, it doesn't matter. You can go to any vote center you want. And at those vote centers, you can drop off your ballot. If you want to vote in person, you can do that, too. Let's say the dog ate your ballot, you can get a replacement ballot. And new is the voter registration. Before, you had to be registered by fourteen, fifteen days before the election. If you weren't, you were out of luck. No longer. We have the Conditional Voter Registration Act that came through, and if you go to a vote center or our office, you can register to vote there and vote a ballot at the same time. So that is new. At these vote centers, there will be assistance in multiple languages, and we will have accessible marking ballot devices. So you will not have, you know, be able to, voters maybe with a little difficulty, disability, will be able to use the accessible marking devices. Drop boxes. For November of 2016, our office, our county, had sixteen drop boxes. You had one here that was one of the highest ones, a favorite, I can definitely say. With this new bill, we will have close to fifty drop boxes throughout the county. They open up the day after we send the ballots out. We mail the ballots at twenty-nine days before an election, drop boxes open the very next day and are open all the way through Election Day. They're secure, they're accessible, they're locked, they're located near public transportation, and they're open on regular business hours. So if the facility, like a library, is open until nine o'clock at night, they will be open until nine o'clock at night also. And at our office, we do have a drive-thru box that is open twenty-four hours a day that, and open until eight PM Election Night. So how did we get here? Well, Sacramento County is in this bill, so we are able to move forward. But why did we choose it? Because it does expand our opportunities, and it fits our lifestyle. People don't vote on Election Day, per se. They vote a little ahead of time, because they got their ballot ahead of time. They think about it, they turn it in, or they're going out of town, so they come to our office and vote. Then they don't always want to go to your, the neighborhood polling place, because they don't go by there, you know, during the workday. But they will go by the one by where they work, or where they pick up their dry cleaning. So this is kind of adapting to the lifestyle. Like I said, sixty-four percent of our voters are already voting by mail. We have this conditional voter registration that we can use, and so very, some great opportunities. Now, the difference between a polling place and a vote center. A polling place, there was one location, and you were assigned to that location, and you could vote there on Election Day. Vote centers between seventy-eight and eighty, depends on the registration of the county, how many we set up. That's why it's kind of vague right now, because I don't know what the registration's going to be in June. At a polling place, there was one accessible unit. That was our auto mark, a very large unit. We will, we are going out to bid right now for a new voting system, and all the new accessible voting machines are like an iPad size, which is much easier for voters with disabilities to use. If you were voting at a polling place, you had thirteen hours on one day to vote. If you wanted to go to a vote center, ninety-three hours at any one of the seventy-eight to eighty vote centers will be available because of the time that it is open. At a vote, a polling place, we had five polling pla, five workers, and they had, you know, definitely trained. And at a vote center, we'll probably, you know, we're looking at eight, and they'll be extensively trained, because we have more time to work with them, and they can also work multiple days. So once we get them trained, we don't have to retrain them for the next day like we do for a polling place. Drop-off locations, sixteen. We're over fifty now with, for this. So, the requirements by law is vote centers, we have to have some open for eleven days, and that is, eleven days is one for every fifty thousand registered voters. Vote centers that are open for four days is one for every ten thousand, so once it gets to the ten, the four days ahead of, you know, before the election, that's the week, it starts the weekend before the election. That's where we find, in our office, the heaviest traffic, is the weekend before the election. So we have the sixteen original that are open, plus sixty-four additional, so we got eighty open throughout the county, and then the drop-off sites, which is close to fifty-two. So now, our question is, where do we put these sites? The bill does require, have different requirements. We have to look at public transportation, communities with low vote-by-mail usage, population centers, language minorities, voters with disabilities, vehicle ownership is one of the requirements, low income, non-registered but eligible and isolated communities. The darker colors show where more of these criterias overlap. So we know that the need is greater there. But just because it's a little lighter down in the south there, it doesn't mean we're not going to be putting a voting center down there, too. We want to make sure it is evenly covered as possible, but make sure we meet the needs of our community. So this is just a start here. So, choices. Now you can vote how you want, when you want, and where you want. Your voice, your choice. And so we've got a great website. Our website, we've expanded it to have a lot of information about this new bill and these new opportunities. And I will tell you, one of the other things that I didn't mention was that moving to vote centers cuts down the amount of equipment that we will need. We'll go from five hundred and forty-eight polling places to these eighty, and we're looking at already off the top of four million dollar savings just in voting equipment alone. So first year's going to be a little rough with the rollout. I mean, I, it's hard to estimate, because we got to do a lot of voter education, but after that, we do see costs going down to run elections, and that's of interest to everybody. So any questions you might have, I am here to answer, and I also have a lot of my staff that showed up to, so I just may be calling...
All voluntary, right?
Vol, yes, and I will may be calling on them, since they decided to show up, so...
Thank you. So I'm sure we have some questions. We'll start with Ms. Bruins over here.
Well, the first question I have is, does this do away with the concept of precincts, then?
No.
Okay.
You still have the precincts, because we still have the district lines, school lines, whatever, whatever we need. So we still have the precinct lines in, so we'll be reporting by, by precincts still, so you won't miss that.
Okay. So then the volunteers in the centers will be there for the, for the full time, or you have eight per center to take different time shifts or so forth?
And, and it'll depend. But at a vote, at a polling place, we were asking them not to do a split shift, not to do, you know, if you're coming for the day, you stay for the day. But because of this longer, longer period of time, they can say, you know, I could work Monday and Friday. Great, I train you once, I've got two days. You know, maybe they can work all week, but only work in the mornings. This gives a lot of flexibility, so we'll have a higher-trained staff that is, has a little bit more experience than we did with the vote, the polling places.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions on this side?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brett.
So the, the ballot, if you will, will be mailed to your home of record, where you're registered to vote. And in the past, if somebody wanted to do absentee voting, they had to make some sort of affirmative action to request that, and then it would come to them. And now, it's just going to come.
Yes.
And is there any process of where you look at, when was the last time that somebody is registered to vote, actually voted? Let's say they haven't voted in five elections, you know, for twenty years. Is that house still going to get a ballot with that person's name on it, that somebody, that anybody literally could send in?
Couple, couple of things there. First of all, we do have a purge process and cleanup. We're forever checking our voter registration database against the NCOA, the National Change of Address, DMV, all of those. We very positively move forward to make sure we have the most current address at all times. The other thing is, when you mentioned that, you know, this ballot could end up in somebody else's hand. Before a ballot is ever opened, it had, we verify the signature. So when you think of those mountains and mountains of ballots, every signature is verified before a ballot is opened.
You know, I had a concern about that, because personally, my signature has changed dramatically over just even the last five years, ten years, whatever. So I'm sure it's changed from when I registered to vote, and that kind of concerns me then, because I like to go to the ballot, the, the, the voting booth. But it concerns me because of the, the possibility that since my signature has changed dramatically, that my ballot will be disregarded, then.
If your signature does not, it's not a true match, it's a comparison, if we can find that it, you know, same type of maybe slant or something in it. But if we have a question, what we do is, we contact you and say, your signature doesn't look quite the same, could you please re-register, so we have the most current signature on file? And we do that as we check petitions and ballots, to make sure our file stays as current as possible.
And then I'm sure, obviously, on, on Election Night or subsequent to that, you're going to be able to tell us basically how many ballots were rejected for signature and stuff like that.
And there is, there is what we call an eight-day cure period, so we, there's always one, not more than, there's always more than one or two, but voters that forget to sign the envelope, we contact them, and they actually have eight days to get back in our office or send us their signature, so we can make their ballot good.
Thank you.
And ballots, postmarks do count now, if you're not aware of that. So as long as your ballot is postmarked by Election Day and received in our office by three days, your ballot, that ballot will count also.
Assuming we put a stamp on it.
No, not even that.
I've been putting stamps on it, and I haven't had to.
Well, we, we prefer not to tell you that, that we do have a...
I take that back.
We do have an agreement with the post office, that if any election mail, because we have the little indicia on it, comes in without the postage, it is brought back to our office, and we do pay the postage. And for an election as big as November, it was like five hundred dollars for insufficient postage. So most people do put stamps on, but we don't want that to stop them, and that, we're the only piece of mail, that if there is not a postage stamp on it, that comes to us rather than then returned to the person that sent it.
Great. Do you have questions before I ask mine?
Yeah, there's been some good questions, and answered a lot of mine, but did I hear you right, that I can look up and verify that my vote's been counted personally?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So you talked about two different things, the eleven day and the four day. Again, one was a vote center, one was a...
Both are vote centers, that we just, further out, we don't need quite as many, but as we get closer to the election, the weekend before the election, we open more.
So are you asking us to be an eleven day or a four day? I'm guessing an eleven day.
I think you guessed right, yes. We'd love to have an eleven day.
Okay, so looking around this room, because this, obviously, we wouldn't impact any rental fees from that, this room, you would think, would work, assuming all the chairs weren't lined up.
Right.
Okay, so...
I can tell you, we've already pinked in here, so...
Okay, so basically, if, if City Hall's open Monday through Friday, eight to five, that works. And basically, outside of making sure it's open, your office is going to supply warm bodies to answer questions, register, give them a new ballot or whatever. Okay.
And all the equipment necessary.
And then in addition, on the day of the actual election, seven to eight, which is normal, like a polling place, so we'd have to, again, make sure it was open, but on the eleven day, so there's two weekends there.
Correct.
So Saturday and Sunday from eight to five?
Correct.
Okay. No, like, ten to two, eight to five? Okay.
Eight hours, continue. According to the bill, eight hours.
All right. And then, so Amy, you gave a report where Chris had given us a figure. Was that for the four day, or was that for the eleven day?
That was for the eleven day.
Okay, and could you remind me again what that was?
Oh, it was approximately about six hundred and eighty-six dollars.
And, and we can ask the county, because they voted for this, to reimburse us for that, right?
Yes. You can ask.
Good answer. I know, I know, we'll be waiting for the check.
I know the answer's...
We are reimbursing, because we know it is quite an extensive time commitment, and we do have a budget to... we do have a budget to.
Okay. Well, again, six hundred dollars amongst friends. So obviously, you know, from my standpoint, we're all elected up here, it's kind of a slap in the face if we say, oh, we're not interested in being a place, because then all the citizens don't really have anywhere to go. I do know from the drop-off that, you know, the nice thing is, I see people coming here all the time dropping it off. One, they save the stamp. And two, you know, whether they work here or are driving by, that's nice to know that you can go to any of them. And this, you know, this opens it up, I get it. I just think that, is there, so we're talking primary and election, basically twice, for sure. Is there a plan to advertise, you know, get the word out, if you will? Because again, somebody, I know some people that are like, oh, I'd never vote by mail because I've got to go in and get my little sticker. Well, good for you. All of a sudden, they're going to get something in the mail that they didn't necessarily want or expect, and if they do anything like throw it away, they won't know what, you know, you know what I'm saying? So hopefully, there's a budget to advertise this.
Yes. We have an extensive outreach program, outreach education program going. And the bill does require that we make two direct contacts with each voter about this. So like a postcard to inform them, something like that. So, you know, we're looking everywhere from metro cable and advertisements, and of course, everything will be in the sample ballot.
Okay.
And in their ballot itself, it'll tell them all the drop-off locations, so.
Well, great. I mean, I personally have been a vote-by-mail for years. It works very well. And, you know, I was kidding about the stamp, I always drop it off. But-
Mr. Mayor, with that thought in mind, would this be a good time to let them know that because this is televised on metro cable and that it doesn't have to have a stamp and it's now gone out over the air?
I think they'll let everybody know already. It's okay.
Yeah. I didn't think you'd be repeating that, Al.
I thought it was a nice time to bring it to everybody's attention.
Are there any situations where someone could have their ballot mailed to an address other than their residence?
Yes. If you have a P.O. box, so a mailing address, or if you're going to be out of town, let's say you want to go to Phoenix for the winter or something, not for the summer, but for the winter, you could say, would you please mail my ballot? We have quite a few military and vacationers, I think of all the reasons, but there's many times they will say, okay, for this election only, would you please mail my ballot to this spot? Because I'll-
I'm a polling place voter, so I've never done the mail thing. So it's like, it's set up for that now, already, you're telling me.
Mm-hmm.
So I just have to arrange it ahead of time.
We'll take care of you. We'll walk you through it. Very easy.
Brett and I, this is a new experience for us.
I've voted in a poll since I was eighteen, so it's been about four or five years.
Well, come to my, come to my house, we'll have coffee, I'll talk to you about it. It's very easy.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, because again, I'd heard, you know, eleven, four, didn't know what the difference was, and now it's very clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Amy, well, we'll get to that when we get there. Never mind. All right, so that was a regular item. We have many, several.
Yeah, we wanted-
Oh, you want direction now?
Yes. Yes, we were looking for a direction from council on the use of the facility as a vote center.
Well, I support, absolutely support using it. I think it's a service to our community. It's virtually, it's a minimal cost to us. I mean, six hundred dollars is nothing. And if we, if they didn't come here, where would they go? You know, this is a logical place, so I would support doing that.
Any, anybody else disagree with that opinion? And I'm assuming you're talking about the eleven-day polling place?
Right, I am.
Okay. All right. So, do we need a motion or just direction to proceed with the eleven-day?
We were asking for feedback and direction.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go for it.
You got it.
So there is a consensus.
I think-
I think so. I'm asking for anybody dissenting, and nobody's nodding their head, so.
So anybody in California can come here and vote?
No, Sac County.
Oh, Sacramento, that's right. It's not all over the state yet, right? You're in Sacramento County, okay. So that's one question. You can't go to other counties to do it, and you have to stay within your own county.
But if you have-
Jill, could you come up to the microphone? Just that way, it picks it up.
But if you were in Los Angeles and you got your ballot there, and for some reason you showed up here on election day, you can drop your ballot off here, and we will make sure Los Angeles gets it in time.
Okay.
Perfect. So, that's new for this year, too.
Okay.
And eventually, as more counties come on board, that will grow.
Yes.
Okay. Two thousand and twenty. So, it looks like we have consensus for an eleven-day, six, seven-hundred-dollar charge.
And we're talking about next year's election, but in the future, could there be a conflict with, I guess there wouldn't be with a council meeting because we started seven, or?
Well-
Again, it's Monday through, it's up till five P.M. and then election day, and we all know election day's on Tuesdays.
We're not going to do a second Thursday in there.
No.
Okay.
Well, if we do, it stops at five.
Just go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this request is just looking for the 2018 election at this point.
Okay.
The June and November.
And if they trash the place, we'll be having a discussion.
Get a good deposit.
Okay. So it looks like you have one, I have sixteen, so.
Okay.
But thanks for coming and helping us clarify, and more importantly, educating. I don't think this probably counts as a direct contact to all the citizens in town, but it's a good preview because anytime you have change, there's going to be some people who are not necessarily for it. But I get the whole cost savings and the machines, and especially, you know, now when you, there's potential for hacking, and that the less machines you have, the less that goes on, so, good. All right.
All right. Thank you.
So, can we move on to the public hearings now?
So, the next item is public hearing, number eight. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9701, levy of fiscal year seventeen eighteen assessments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year seventeen eighteen assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District 9701.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is the second of two parts, as we do every year with our various landscape and lighting districts. Your first action was taken on July twenty-seventh at your last council meeting. At that time, you approved two resolutions. One, to initiate proceedings for the annual assessment for the 2017-18 fiscal year. The second resolution for each district accept, basically accepted the draft engineer's report and set the date for the public hearing as of tonight. What we're asking for you to do tonight is to open a public hearing, receive any public comment that you may have, and then act on a resolution adopting or levying the assessments for fiscal year 2017-18 and for Landscape Assessment District 9701, zones one, two, three, and four.
Thank you, sir. So, again, we had the report last meeting, set the public hearing for tonight. I'm going to go ahead, open the public hearing, seeing nobody desperately running up to talk to us about their landscape maintenance district. I will close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions for staff? If not, I will go with the pleasure of the council.
I'd move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries four-one. Next item, please.
Next item is, the subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts 9801, 9802, and 0301, levy of fiscal year seventeen eighteen assessments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution for each of the districts to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year seventeen and eighteen assessments.
As with the last item, this item before you is to levy the assessments for fiscal year seventeen eighteen for the three districts indicated. We ask that you open a public hearing, hear any comment, and then take action on the three resolutions included with the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing open. Public hearing close. Pleasure of the council.
I'll move approval.
I'll second the motion for all three.
We have a motion and a second of all three resolutions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? All three resolutions carry four-one. Next item, please.
Next item, number ten. The subject is the Citrusites Lighting Assessment District, levy of fiscal year seventeen eighteen assessments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year seventeen eighteen assessments for the Citrusites Lighting Assessment District.
Good evening, council.
It's you again.
Council, city, and mayor, Leslie Blumquist, General Services Division Department. Similar to the other two, this is for the street lighting assessment district. Last meeting on the twenty-seventh, you took the first step as well, and we're here tonight to recommend adoption of the resolution to levy assessments for fiscal year seventeen eighteen on this lighting assessment district. And open the public hearing, hear comments, and then adopt that resolution. I would like to point out, since we came to see you last meeting, there has been an update in the proposed seventeen eighteen budget for the lighting district. The special assessment number that we got from the county recently was slightly lower than originally anticipated, about nineteen hundred dollars less. And so there is an additional nineteen hundred dollars in other revenue to supplement the budget for this assessment district.
Great. Thank you, Leslie. All right, so this is a public hearing. Again, we heard the main staff report last time. Essentially, these are the fees that are levied to pay for streetlights throughout the city, so. I will open the public hearing, close the public hearing. Pleasure of the council.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
I was worried there for a minute.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Motion carries four-one. In our last public hearing, Amy.
Number eleven. The subject is zoning code amendment, wireless telecommunications facilities. The recommendation is to determine the proposed project is exempt from CEQA under section one-five-zero-six-B-three, and to introduce for first reading and waive the reading of the entire ordinance, amending the zoning code in regard to wireless telecommunications facilities.
Good evening, council. Allison Bermudas with the Planning Division, along with Nick Norvell, representing the City Attorney's Office, on this item before you on wireless telecommunications facilities. Our overview tonight is, we are updating a proposal ordinance to update our code to be consistent with a couple changes. One goes back to federal law, section six-four-zero-nine on wireless telecommunications facilities, that streamline the permitting process. And then also to update our code regarding installations of cellular facilities within the right-of-way. These small cells are being deployed throughout the state based upon new legislation to increase wireless facilities availability along very busy thoroughfares. This is the ordinance proposal to update the zoning code. It did go before the Planning Commission in June. They have reviewed it, commented, provided comments, and we are here tonight to present it to you for final action to follow through. As mentioned, that was federal law back in 1996 that talked about how cellular facilities are deployed and what created this national policy for deployment. Also told us how, within government, we could regulate the installation of facilities and what we could and could not do, that we could impose aesthetic requirements on facilities, but we couldn't prohibit them. We couldn't deny an application based upon R.F. or the emissions from them, and we couldn't discriminate against wireless providers. And then, as mentioned, the recent, the most recent change has been the Public Utilities interpretation that says that within our city's right-of-way, we must allow these wireless carriers to install their facilities, like other utility companies would install their infrastructure. We would allow wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way. They did say that we can still put on a reasonable time, place, and manner of how they're installed. And that's what this proposal is tonight, is to establish that design criteria that we want within the right-of-way. If they're going to be there, we want to make sure that they look well, that they look good, and they're not distracting to our streetscapes. A couple things to point out on right-of-way installations. It is, there's still legislation pending on different aspects of it, some going before the California Supreme Court, that we'll have to wait and see how that answer, how that plays out, as well as S.B. six forty-nine, that's been quite a bit in the news about how that will be deployed. May change somehow this proceeds and rolls out, but we'll see how that, that happens. We felt it was important to continue this process and get our code updated so that we have the design standards in place for when the next step comes in. The right-of-way installs are new. What they are, are these, they're small antennas. They're placed on infrastructure, light poles, could be on traffic lights, things like that. And they are smaller than, and they're not very large installations, and it's to get closer to the ground where there's heavy traffic, a lot more people, with the increased video demand and cell service that's being demanded, you know, near the streets. So that's the idea of these smaller systems. They don't need these very tall towers we're used to, you know, sixty to one-hundred-and-twenty feet tall. These are low, lower level. So we have two regulations, one, the private property installations that we're all used to that look like this. They could look like a tree, a flag, or they could just be a very tall pole, as you see at these photos. And then the right-of-way installations of what we're talking about as well, which are disguised, we hope are disguised within existing light poles or infrastructure, as shown in these pictures. And the significant changes for this ordinance, as you know, we have had regulations for a long time on how we regulate the cellular installations on the private property, so we had to add the right-of-way installation information. And then we did amend our private property stuff to be current with the legislation as well. So we made some significant changes I just want to go over briefly. The main change is the permitting process itself. In the past, we would review a use permit, basically approving the use of that property or that pole for cellular. We have changed that to a design review permit, since we're have, basically have to allow them, but we're regulating how they look. We felt a design review permit was actually the more appropriate to process. We are reducing the processing time for applications that we receive that are consistent with our design criteria. So we have pretty specific criteria in the ordinance. If the application comes in and they have met our minimum standard that we have in the ordinance, then we will process that application, you know, at a staff-level review, and it'll eliminate some of the public hearing process to make it quicker processing. And then if they are presenting a design that is not within our minimum standards, then it does have to go through the public review process before the Planning Commission. That hopes to drive a higher design level that's submitted, so they get the, a little bit faster processing time. We also will have a prerequisite, or a pre-application meeting requirement. Based upon the federal law, we have a shot clock, which basically, from the time they submit their application, we have a limited amount of days before the application needs to be processed. And so this pre-application meeting then will help us determine and work out anything that we may need or additional information, so when they submit, it does make that application process faster, so we're not violating that shot clock that's given to us. We've updated our order of preference of where these antennas, we'd like them. We have a hierarchy system in the code of, you know, initially, we would like it on an existing pole, we don't want a new pole, we want it in different locations, and then the bottom criteria then would be the new pole. So we did update that preference to try to encourage then any installations to be on existing poles and not create new poles. We also did add a ten-year term limit to our design review permits. Currently, when you're issued a use permit for a cellular facility, they don't expire. We have added a ten-year timeframe with the technology changes. You know, every year to two years, people are updating their antennas or they're being removed. We felt a ten-year time limit, then we don't end up with obsolete equipment on poles that's no longer used. So when they get to the nine-year period, they would start reevaluating their pole and resubmitting to, for a new permit if need be. I think I've showed you this picture before, but this is the main reason to update the code for installations in the right-of-way, so we don't get something that looks like the photo on the right. We get, on our light poles, we get something that blends in and is not distracting. Other options, this, there's actually an antenna on the top of the pole that's on the right. And then there's other options, if they don't have that standard, that are coming out into the industry, antennas concealed within the light poles, maybe as a garbage can or under a bench. This is the motions that's presented to you tonight to introduce the ordinance and accept the first reading. the first reading. Nick is here with me as well to talk about any of, if you have questions on the right-of-way installations.
Thank you, Allison. Steve, you have a question?
More of concerns. We keep talking about the right-of-way and installing on light poles and traffic signal poles and everything like that. My concern is more of these poles are listed for the type of use, whether it's supporting an arm with a traffic signal on it or a luminaire, and to be putting equipment on it and drilling holes and running wires, it's not listed for that. I'm worried about the structural integrity, the wind loading, I don't know how, once these modifications are made, it would nullify the certification, and if something should happen, fall over in a windstorm, cause property damage, injury or death, we're the deep pockets. So they they put this equipment on our poles and one falls over or gets hit, and so I have a major concern about the liability and the risk. And I also find it interesting that they want to put it near streets where people are driving and texting and talking, it's not appropriate in the car. So it would mean on these agreements or whatever we do, the cost for inspection to make sure these are done right, that the poles are certified, from an engineering standpoint, being held harmless and indemnification from these companies, and I might be repeating myself, but cost for inspections, that we go out and make sure that they comply with these requirements. So those are my concerns with this moving forward.
Nick?
Yes, those would all be issues. This is sort of a two-step process. One is to create, from a planning perspective, what the installments would look like, and the second step is to actually enter into agreements and come up with how these companies, what the agreement would be with the city to actually use the city's infrastructure. And it would involve a review process that includes public works or engineering closely examining that the poles and the locations they've identified are appropriate in terms of its ability to bear whatever additional weight it might be created. From my understanding, these are relatively small units on the poles or somewhat manageable-sized cabinets, but that is something that would be addressed in those agreements. There could be cost recovery to make sure that the fees cover the staff time to do those inspections. And then finally, our office obviously would be interested in making sure that the agreements are written so that as much risk as the installments create, the companies are indemnifying or holding harmless to city for any potential damage they could cause.
Yeah, this wouldn't be changed with this pending legislation, would still be protected. The legislation that's pending, what is it, six forty-nine?
Six forty-nine.
Yes, it might change the process that the city uses to allow them on poles, but all of those interests that we just discussed, the city would still be able to protect, including making sure if truly, if there's a public safety concern with an installment on a pole, the city would still have authority to say no, even under the new legislation.
I think that addresses my major concerns. Thank you.
Jeanie?
Just a couple things. Under the, under the law, is there a maximum number per square mile? I mean, is it potentially, is it possible that we could have one on every single light pole, every single piece of infrastructure that we have in the city?
From what I understand from multiple discussions with the carriers, it's unlikely in the next five to ten years, I guess, what what they would say they could foresee now. I haven't heard of numbers that would number in the high hundreds or thousands, so right now with current technology, that's unlikely. I don't know, can't speak to the future, if potentially these types of installations might replace the macro cell towers that the.
That was one of my questions, too. I would imagine because technology is so much more advanced than it was twenty years ago, that these little antennas are very powerful. And so is there the chance, is the potential to take down some of the insightly ones that we've been living with all these years because there'll be enough of these smaller ones to do more than what the other ones were doing?
I think the carriers would have to speak to that. I haven't heard, that hasn't been.
That's not.
Promised or stated. From what I understand, the technology is more that the macro cell tower creates sort of an umbrella, and this puts the points on the umbrella that makes sure that the signal fully gets to where it needs to be.
So then, back to my question, the volume or the quantity of these, is there any limitation to that, or is any guideline on that, or is it one?
There's not a legal limitation on the numbers, no.
Okay.
Yeah, any questions? Brett?
Yeah, just, just to kind of piggyback what Jeanie said, that we're going to take something much smaller and replace it with, with, because of technology, something that used to be much larger. And there's been definitely concerns about the RF emissions with the larger devices. It would seem to me that the smaller devices wouldn't have so much RF emissions, but just, are you able to address that point? Is that if something that's smaller, even though more powerful in what it can do, does that reduce the RF emissions? Can you even address that?
That's something I would probably defer to the carriers to answer.
I was talking to her.
Okay.
Allison, do you know it all?
I do not know.
Because these things are up in like a big tree now and a big pole, and people already have a concern, and now we're going to bring them down to basically human level.
Closer to the ground.
And, you know, right to human level almost, or literally, if there's a bench, you know, you're going to sit on the bench and all of a sudden start to fill a sizzle, you know, kind of a thing, so.
From, from a legal's perspective, the nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act limits cities and other local jurisdictions' abilities to consider RF, basically as long as something is within what the FCC says is safe. Unfortunately, local jurisdictions can't consider RF.
And I, and I get that, I do, but again, that goes back to when things are way up high in the air, and are we even looking at that? Is anybody, you know, thinking about that? And again, I think logically, it seems like they wouldn't put so much out, but that doesn't mean they're not. So I think that's something that we should at least know about going forward as we look at these things, and if there is a problem, you know, then maybe that's something that we need to get behind in, in trying to change some legislation.
We, part of the update does require that they present to us their FCC certificates that say they have provided their measurements and their standards in their meeting the FCC guidelines, and that's what we use to determine that they are in compliance in the legal limit.
Thank, thank you, Allison. So I hear where you're going, Brett. And, you know, asking the carriers, they're probably not going to give us what we want, but maybe we should ask if they can sit on the bench for so long, and if they're fine, then we move forward. But, so I do have one question, and I know SB six forty-nine is still pending, and within that bill, not only does it regulate it more, but it also limits what you can charge these multi-billion dollar companies at to two hundred and fifty dollars a pole. Outside of six forty-nine, with the changes we're making here, the ability for the cities to negotiate is not preempted at a certain figure. It's still an open negotiation for them to use our facilities.
If SB six forty-nine passes.
Right, forgetting, forgetting SB six forty-nine for a minute. What we're doing tonight doesn't preclude that.
No.
Okay, if six forty-nine passes, yeah, two hundred and fifty bucks a pole, they make more millions, we get screwed, I get that. But what we're doing tonight is outside, there's no limitation. Okay, that's correct. Cool. All right, so we're kind of doing this to comply with an old, you know, the nineteen ninety-six act and some, or some recent changes. So it's kind of like what we saw before, whether we like the voting act or not, it's coming, so get over it. Planning Commission is recommending this to us. You're recommending that we take the Planning Commission recommendation and move this forward, subject to additional updates if six forty-nine passes. Is that clear?
Move staff approval, recommendation?
Mayor, can I just check, was the public hearing open for this item?
It was about to be. Didn't you catch that? I was going to tell Brett he was a little early, but, you know, appreciate his enthusiasm. So I will open the public hearing, since I missed that part, and no Verizon folks want to come up and tell us how much more millions they're going to make with this? All right, close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Why didn't see them coming up? You didn't fill out a form. So do you want to address us?
Yes.
Please.
Please.
State your name for the record, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Griffith. I work for a representative of a carrier. We actually, our role is to install infrastructure as a telecom utility.
Okay.
In the public right-of-way. So it's a company called Mobility, and just wanted to take this opportunity to answer a couple of those questions that you had put out there. For the RF emissions, we're very glad to share that information. That's part of our work to actually educate the public and to assure the public that our, our equipment is safe. For the RF emissions, for a typical small cell, we're told that the way we actually describe it is that a small cell emits between one and four percent of the allotted FCC maximum standard. So you're talking about a minuscule amount, these large macro towers up on the top of hills versus these small cells, incidentally, which have a range typically, their radio frequency range for coverage is, we typically say about up to fifteen hundred feet, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred feet. So we're looking at less than a quarter mile is a radius around that point, depending on the topography and the blockages.
Right.
So these are relatively short-range, small cell devices, very small, technology is going rampant with these, and the idea is to network these in close proximity, you know, so we're looking at half mile between these typically. And our particular company at this time is representing for a project coming up that we'd like to apply for soon permitting-wise, we're representing one of the four major carriers. Right now, we're proposing four sites. And to answer that question about trying to predict or project the actual number that'll come up in the years, I would say that if you kind of gauge, you know, the four major carriers are looking to probably do this, quarter to a half mile apart from each other, kind of gives you an idea if this technology really does take off. And the last thing I just want to mention, too, over time, these small, the small cell technology will get better and better and smaller and smaller in terms of equipment and impact on the actual environment and the aesthetics, and so for now, there is that umbrella type of effect. These small cells for now is technology is developing and being deployed over time, preparing for that twenty-twenty-ish year when 5G is really supposed to start showing up and explode, where you have huge data needs for autonomous vehicles, smart homes, much, much quicker and much more sophisticated devices, handheld devices that are going to utilize this new technology. It's going to be a whole new ballgame. So that's really the idea of this new small cell technology, to really accommodate that 5G, the next generation of telecommunications that'll really take off and change everyone's lives more dramatically. What was I going to say? Oh, yeah, so the idea about the, these small cells will slowly come in and first supplement these typical macro towers. If I could see, we would say over time, that you'll see them start to replace those larger towers, those larger towers will become less and less appropriate, because those are really designed for longer-range voice data, where voice, you know, technology, radio frequencies, whereas this new technology is all about data, and so, so video and that high-capacity need with low latency or quick reaction time. So that's just kind of a quick description of what we're looking at.
Appreciate you stepping forward and clarifying, answering what you can. I think Jeanie has a quick question.
I have one question. On these new smaller cells, can more than one carrier be housed on one, or is it, do they each have their own?
So for now, the technology, we're at one carrier per approximately three-foot-tall wand. Those are the antennas you saw in the, in the photographs there, and photo sims. For now, that's the technology because of the radio wave frequent, the frequency disturbance or interference between the different carrier frequencies, so, but there, there is word out there that as technology does improve, they'll be able to start sharing those smaller antennas.
As do the big towers now.
With the big towers now, yeah, they're using those directional arrays that have like a fifteen-degree range, so you have to have them posted all around those towers.
Right.
This new technology is much, much, much different. It's a single wand with three hundred and sixty-three, three hundred and sixty-degree coverage all around it, so it's a whole different ballgame and much less aesthetically, you know, affect, you know.
Imposing.
Imposing, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you step away. Goodness, Mr. Mayor. If I'm reading you right, then, we have a fifteen-hundred-foot epicenter that this wand is going to cover. We're looking at four wands in the same fifteen-hundred-foot range, once all the carriers get on board.
So this, what I'm describing is our particular, the carrier that we represent, and I can say it, it's Sprint. We have four locations, each with a up to fifteen-hundred-foot range around each individual wand, so it's this radius. That's literally our proposal now. We could be asked to deploy more in the future, a few more here and there, I couldn't say what that number would be, but so as we're representing Sprint, one of the four major carriers, we know that there's companies or the carriers themselves out there doing the same thing we are.
Right.
So the three other carriers could at this very moment be, be watching this, this council and be very careful to see if they can move forward with that same type of technology and concept that we are looking to deploy for Sprint.
Thank you.
So the potential exists. I mean, we get that with the more companies there are, so.
Keep it in mind, too, cities have control of time, place, and manner. So if, literally, if the city starts feeling that the right-of-ways are becoming too congested, in different ways, you can fall back on some, you know, controlling that to a certain extent in terms of that.
Today, if six forty-nine passes, not so much.
It'll be, yeah, it'll, we'll see. I think.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll see.
All right, thank you for stepping forward.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, so the public hearing, I don't see anybody else. Anybody from Verizon, AT&amp;T? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What's the pleasure, Mr. Daniels? I believe you made a motion earlier?
Move staff approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Recommendation, I'm sorry.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Back up? Opposed?
No.
No? Abstained? Motion carries four one. No more public hearings, so I can't blow it. Next item, Department of Report. We can handle that.
Department Report number twelve, the subject is update on tree issues in Crosswoods and related areas by the Community and Economic Development Department.
So Colleen, tell us how the trees are doing in Crosswoods.
Sure. Hello, good evening, Colleen Mcduffie, planning manager of the city. And yes, I'm here tonight to just briefly give a summary of the tree issues out there at Crosswoods and let you know where we're at right now. So the very end of June is when we first became aware of the situation. The city received a call from a resident who said, hey, there's, you know, been trenching going on out here, do they have a permit? We immediately contacted the Crosswoods Homeowners Association and asked if this was true, and they said, yes, there had been trenching going on throughout their community. It was being performed by a company called Cablecom, who is a contractor to Comcast, who was doing this work to install new fiber optic lines within Crosswoods. We soon thereafter walked the site, city staff did with our city arborist, and just to kind of get a sense of the extent of it, geographically, it's a pretty large area where the trenching had already occurred, this trenching had already occurred, you know, without the city's knowledge. The normal, kind of normal process would be, because the city has a tree protection ordinance, you are required to get a permit before you do any type of trenching or work either within the drip line of a tree or to a tree itself. So in this case, clearly, a tree permit should have been obtained and approval from the city. That process would have allowed us to review an arborist report, we would have visited the site, we would have looked at the trenching paths and seen if they were or were not appropriate. So in this case, unfortunately, that did not occur. On July twentieth, city staff held a meeting that was attended by Comcast, Cablecom, and the Crosswoods Homeowners Association. I think those three parties were all very aware and apologetic that this had occurred and understand clearly now that they should have received approval from the city, and they did not. It really, it was a good meeting in terms of everyone trying to work towards a, trying to kind of get the best solution we could for where we're at right now in terms of trying to. trying to minimize damages to the tree and what can we do to try to help more trees live if we can. So the results of that meeting was they were instructed that they would, should prepare what we're calling a tree mitigation plan. And they have done that and they have submitted that to us. And we did review that. We, we agree with their overall approach, which is going to involve assessing each tree on a tree-by-tree basis. And we are still kind of working out some of the details of that plan, but hopefully that will be wrapped up soon so they can start that process of really assessing the damage and going forward, seeing if there's some things that can occur. Bigger picture, they are doing other work throughout the city. Comcast is, you know, line, installing this fiber optic throughout the city and they are on notice very clearly that, you know, anytime they're doing work within the drip line of a tree, they need to get a permit or approval from us. So that's it. That's the summary of where we're at now and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So thank you for looking out for our trees in the city. We will appreciate that Comcast is following the proper rule of the city and the law. So thank you for that. Next item, please.
Next item is city manager items.
Yes, just briefly, counsel, I, I wanted to just really acknowledge a member of the police department, Sergeant Jeremy Garrison, who was honored and recognized by the Chamber of Commerce Education Committee this week for his work with our youth. I think the council knows and that he has done a lot of work in running our Explorer program. I know firsthand the great work that he's done there as well as running all of our youth intervention programs. And he's really done a tremendous job. So I really wanted to call that out and commend Sergeant Garrison, the police department, of course, Chief Lawrence and all the men and women who work so hard every day in working with our, our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Next item, Amy.
Next item is items requested by council members, future agenda items.
Anything from the chain gang up here?
I think I'll take this opportunity to do something I've never done. Item 11, I'd like to change my vote to a yes to support staff's recommendation.
I'm not sure I'm going to accept that.
Well, you have to.
Okay.
I think my emotions on SB 649 run amok a little bit, but I think it's an appropriate...
So Ruth Ann, since, since it was a public hearing, we closed it. Can Mr. Miller, he had a mental lapse, he would like to go back and change his...
What I would, what I would recommend is that first of all, that particular item is a first read, so we'll come back for a second read, at which time any and all council members can vote thumbs up or thumbs down on it. And the minutes for this evening's meeting can show that, excuse me, Vice Mayor Miller indicated that his preference would be that his vote, you know, would have been in favor. I think since the item passed overall, it doesn't, it's not that...
I was under the impression with Robert's rules that I could change it before the meeting adjourned.
It's not like it's a hanging cat.
Yes, okay, yes, technically, a motion for, first of all, I don't recall if the council has adopted Robert's Rules of Order in its entirety. I hope not because Robert's Rules of Order is a, nothing but a field of bureaucracy. However, the general rule on a motion for reconsideration, now that you've asked, the general rule on a motion for reconsideration is that a motion for reconsideration can be made by someone who voted in the majority.
Okay, so does anybody want to throw a bone to Steve and let him change his vote? I mean, I'm, I'm fine.
It's good, it's all good.
Okay, so it's coming back a second time. You can vote however you want then and we'll be good.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to leave it. 4-1. Let's make that the big one on the thing there. So next item is a closed session and I got to just explain this to the public. So rules have changed, so initially, you know, generally, we do our closed session before council meetings just so that you people aren't sitting here waiting for us to come out and move forward. The state, although they do it different, for everybody else, they have stated, when we talk about executive compensation, we have to have a closed session during a regularly-scheduled council meeting, where our council meetings are seven on. And so we're having a closed session, we're going into a closed session to discuss executive compensation. We've already passed the budget, so it would all be within that realm, but because it does require this step, we're going to go into closed session. I'm going to tell you right now, we're not going to come out today and announce anything. It will be at our next council meeting. So y'all can stay here comfortable, wait for us to come out and say nothing, or you can go home and we can stay and finish our job, you know, whatever you guys want to do, but if I were you, I'd be heading home because we're not going to come out and tell you anything. So we will be going into an executive closed session. Ruth Ann, do you want to add anything to that?
To reinforce what the mayor said is that there will be no final action taken in the closed session, both because of the council's commitment and both because the Brown Act doesn't allow it to be. So there you go.
So come back next meeting and we'll tell you how we spent our time. All right, so all those involved in the closed session, we'll go over here to the council room and we'll continue.